Seven, twenty eighteen is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services websites. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all regular board meetings. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at five oh three nine one six three zero four five or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language into which they'll be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance. Please use the microphone over here.
Hola, muy buenas. Hola, hola muy buenas tardes, me llamo Daniel y voy a estar ofreciendo servicios de interpretación en español ubicado acá en la parte del fondo del cuarto. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, me llamo Jana, soy traductora de russo y si alguien necesita mi servicio, por favor estoy aquí para ustedes. Gracias.
Salam aleikum, amino wa, zoma ala turjuan hadhav ha'adet mecha sanjulah. Salam aleikum.
Yo soy Ma, soy traductor de español, si alguien necesita ayuda puede ayudarle. Si soy Ma puedo hacerle traducción de habla rusa que usted necesite, ¿verdad?
Chao, señores, si ustedes necesitan comunicación en Vietnam, por favor, vayan hacia atrás del equipo. Gracias, señores.
Thank you. Board members, are there any items in the business agenda that you have questions on? This does not include individual action items listed on tonight's agenda.
In the minutes, there was a change in that adjusted.
Did she hear?
We can, why don't we go ahead with the rest of the meeting and I'll just go over and communicate, but there may be something in the business agenda that there was meetings.
Okay. Anything else? So before we move into the agenda, I just want to make a quick announcement. It was posted that tonight's discussion of the memorandum of understanding with the Portland Police Bureau would be voted on tonight. And we have postponed the vote. Tonight we'll be having a discussion, but the vote has been postponed to a future board meeting to allow for more information gathering from students and school communities. And later in the agenda, we'll have a much more detailed discussion.
Furthermore, I just want to recognize student representative Paisler for his leadership on this and his, his work to engage as many student voices as possible in a short amount of time and the plan that we have moving forward to continue to do so under his leadership.
Okay, so student and public comments. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment? Ms. Hewson?
Yes, we have five students. The first two speakers are Elijah Sevchik and Kita.
Okay, as people are making their way to the table, I'd like to review guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen without distraction from our electronic devices or papers. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comments. If you want a follow-up from the board office, please contact Ms. Hewson or Roseanne Powell, the board manager. Guidelines for public input emphasize respecting consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Hewson to distribute to the board and superintendent. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation.
Our next two students are Charlie Abrams and Amelia Ernst.
Sure. I'm Charlie Abrams, I'm fifteen years old, and I came here today because I am genuinely scared of my future. It's no doubt that our climate is changing. We used to take hundreds of thousands of years, is now happening, happening in a matter of decades so fast that I'm a freshman and I've seen the change under my own eyes. This is unprecedented, although every single person in this room doesn't know firsthand the true impact of climate change. Just know how lucky you are that you're not one of the increasing 2.3 billion people that have experienced drought. And then if we just lived in another part of our own country, we could become one of the increasing fifteen thousand people killed annually by hurricanes alone. That is what I'm scared of. I'm the affected generation that will only see the statistics go up unless we can change something and we do not have much more time to act. But what is most frightening in my mind is that my generation and your children have no idea the reality of what's happening. I testified here in this very seat three years ago urging you to teach my generation the correct facts behind climate change. I was just a sixth grader, but I took my climate activism to the next level when I heard that my bill got passed. However, I'm still here today because no climate action has been taken since. Where are the climate textbooks I was eager to see? Where are the new curriculum for my teachers? There are issues that will be the same in ten years, but the immensity of climate change will be different next week. I can't stress enough how important teaching the right facts behind the most crucial issue facing our planet is. Aside from the facts, climate change is a personal issue, and I want to illustrate that. In sixth grade, when I started publicly speaking about climate change, a family heard me speak that I'd later run into years later. I was in Washington DC, flown out to lobby with Citizens Climate Lobby when I ran into them. The mom came up to me and told me a story about her son. She said that my speech two years ago had motivated her son to help the environment in ways he could when he was only six. My point is that children are easily inspired. I wouldn't be here today if I wasn't too inspired as a younger kid, but we can't blind the generation from the biggest issues that they will face. More and more cities are implementing climate curriculum, and my generation, the affected generation, needs it done now. All that is important to me, all that I ask, is that we finally put this bill into action. Even though it is three years late, it is in your hands to act now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amelia Ernst, and that's spelled E-R-N-S-T, and I'm a senior at Grant High School. Today I'm here to provide my opinion on the proposed agreement between Portland Public Schools and Portland Police Bureau regarding school resource officers, otherwise known as SROs. I do not believe that there has been adequate student feedback on this agreement. Although this agreement claims to use referrals to the juvenile justice system as a last resort, the implementation of SROs will inevitably increase the likelihood of students entering the justice system. According to the ACLU, during the 2013-2014 school year, there were 223,000 referrals to law enforcement officers in schools nationwide, most often for interference with the educational facility. Students have been charged with disorderly conduct for kicking a trash can, arguing, refusing to leave the lunchroom, and countless other mild misbehaviors. While this agreement claims to try to avoid such incidents, there is always the risk, there is always the possibility of misconduct by the school or police. This possibility is simply too big a risk when we are talking about students potentially entering the criminal justice system. Additionally, SROs further contribute to discrimination in schools. Black students are more than twice as likely than their white peers to be referred to law enforcement, usually for objective behaviors such as disrespect. Referrals to police are also discriminatory towards students with disabilities. Twenty-six percent of law enforcement referrals within schools were students with special needs. These practices undermine the creation of safe and respectful school environments where students are able to prioritize learning. Having armed police officers in schools can lead to a hostile and unsafe environment for some students. With two fatal shootings by Portland Police in the past seven months, Jason Washington and Patrick Simmons, as well as a man dying in police custody on November twenty-second, Portland Police have been proven to pose threats of dangers, danger, particularly towards people of color and people with disabilities. Stationing police officers in schools will further contribute to an environment of fear and distrust. In order for students to be fully engaged in school, it is crucial that they feel safe. For some students, SROs are taking away their feelings of safety. Furthermore, there is nothing outlined in this agreement that illustrates the necessity of SROs in schools. If student referrals to the justice system are to be the last resort, what are SROs providing that school staff are unable to? The argument that officers stationed in schools are to protect against potential intrusions is one based in paranoia. The actual threat of an outside intruder is relatively minor, and the likelihood of SROs preventing violence is even slimmer. SROs are detrimental to the, to a healthy learning environment, and I, along with many of my peers, do not believe that they make schools safer. I provided Nick Paisler with more detailed notes regarding this agreement, so please reach out to him or me if you have any further questions. Thank you, and I urge PPS to engage students in further discussion.
Thank you.
And our last student speaker is Gwen Kalizewski.
Hi, my name is Gwen Kalizewski, K-A-L-I-S-Z-E-W-S-K-I, and I'm a senior at Cleveland High School, and I'm here to testify on the proposed agreement between PPS and PBB regarding SROs. Law enforcement and SROs were put in schools initially to enforce zero tolerance policies, and the placement and enforcement have proven to perpetuate racial control. Anthropologist Marsha Weissman writes in her book Prelude to Prison that police presence and criminalization of misdeeds have resulted in an increase in the number of in-school arrests, and over seventy percent of the school-based arrests or referrals to law enforcement involve minority students. By putting this method of keeping racial and social control into the education system, law enforcement, the production of prison culture in schools, and easy interaction with the incarceration system, it is a way to further expand this control to maintain a status quo that exists in larger society. The presence of law enforcement and the subsequent production of prison culture in schools has made schools become part of the carceral state. Weissman writes, "The carceral state also consists of zero tolerance policies that criminalize an increasing range of human behavior. Increasingly, student insubordination and normal adolescent behavior in schools, the presence of SROs will criminalize behaviors that are otherwise dealt with by administration." Weissman writes, "Black males tend to be suspended for infractions that are highly dependent upon teacher interpretations, such as disrespectful attitudes or insubordination." This ties into the PPS policy because on page one, it says that SROs have the authority to assist in maintaining school discipline at their discretion, but this isn't, this should be made more clear because there's room for racism and bias if it's just based on their discretion. There is a very clear link between suspension, dropout rates, and incarceration. Suspended students are more likely to drop out of school, and school suspensions with, play a critical role in producing dropouts have significantly increased over the period of time that also saw the growth of incarceration. And African-American students are 3.5 times more likely to be suspended or expelled as white students. And then finally, to tie back into the agreement, I don't think that SROs should be allowed to impede on classroom time, which is outlined on page three, that they can act as an informal instructor. And there's no mention of how officers who respond and investigate criminal behavior on school grounds will be enforced or maintained. There's, it outlines how they should act, but there's no mention of how it'll be enforced and maintained. There's countless research on the detriments of law enforcement presence in schools, but little that show the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Katie Richley and David Morrison.
Hi, my name is Katie Richley, R-I-C-H-L-E-Y, and I'm here today as a mental health therapist, as a professional who has given training to other professionals around the subject of trauma-informed care, and as the parent of two students in Portland Public School. I'd like to speak today about the policy or lack thereof when one student sexually assaults another student. I will tell you that students in the school are quite engaged in conversations around this issue, and I would encourage you to engage in further discussions with students. But I'll speak today from my perspective. When a trauma occurs, it affects by its very nature a person's sense of safety and also a person's sense of trust in themselves and in the world around them. After an earthquake, takes people a while to figure out that the ground's not shaking anymore. After an interpersonal trauma, particularly a sexual trauma, this process is much more complicated. My understanding of the current practice in schools is that when one student shares with the school their experience of a sexual assault, the school proceeds by keeping the two students in the same school. If there's a concern about safety, each student is then assigned half of the building and told to stay in their own half of the building. And I have a great deal of concern about this policy. I'd like you to imagine for a moment what it must be like to be a student in a school who can only visit with your friends in half of the school, who can only sit in half of the lunchroom or go to the lunchroom on alternate days. I'd like you to imagine what it would be like for a student to only have access to a teacher who might be in there assigned half of the building, or a counselor who may be able to offer support. By their very nature, these actions are isolating and alienating for any student, let alone a student who has recently been the victim of a sexual assault. In addition, there are several instances where students have shared their experience with the school and have shared that they have been under the influence of drugs or alcohol when the assault occurred, or have shared their experience with the community in a way that was not sanctioned by the school. Students have been threatened with punitive actions in these circumstances, including being told that they could not or should not be on sports teams, being told that they could not or should not attend homecoming. These actions are further isolating and are punitive, and while the punishment may not technically be for reporting an assault, the message is the same. This has ramifications in terms of depression, suicidality, student engagement in school, dropout rates, drug and alcohol use, and abuse. I would encourage you to further look at these policies and engage students and community holders in that discussion.
Last time I was here, Julia came up to me and told me that since she's been informed by me during the last campaign of the dangers of wireless technology and cellphone use, that she's changed her use of the cellphone and that she tells her friends as well. And what I'm wondering is why is, why are the kids in schools left out of this information considering the cellphone is the most dangerous device that they have? I think schools should be teaching kids how to use wireless devices more safely. Parents should be notified. And in some of the material that I left you, there's a, there's information about a course that, that you can utilize in the schools to teach kids wireless safety. Shifting to the situation of the cell towers on the schools, I have a letter from then safety manager Patrick Wolf, July of 2010, who said that the cell tower leases would not be renewed by a PPS policy when they expired. Despite that policy, the leases were renewed. And six years later, March of 2016, PPS received a letter from somebody in close proximity to Green Thumb School. I'll read just a little snippet of that here. "My neighbor who lives right next door is dying of cancer. The neighbor who lived in front of the tower died of cancer. My mom, who lived with me two houses down from the tower, died of cancer. I was diagnosed with early menopause at thirty-four when my mom was diagnosed with breast cancer. My other neighbor, who lives four houses down from the cell tower, is currently going through natural treatment for ten years." And there are two more neighbors with cancer who live nearby the cell tower. So this can actually be, aside from the human toll, this can actually be a huge problem for PPS because the commercial liability policy that PPS holds excludes specifically harm from electromagnetic frequencies, since they did the research and they know how dangerous it is. PPS is not covered for that. So any eventual lawsuits, there's, there's no insurance, and the cost that the, that the board or the, or the, or PPS will have for that will be huge. So I, my usual theme that I'm always up here begging for is to get rid of Wi-Fi and stop exposing kids to chronic, chronic microwave exposure and start teaching kids how to use these devices more safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers, Deb Meyer and Tony Jones.
Hello, my name is Tony Jones. I'm the president of the Coalition of Black Men, where a thirty-year-old organization which has worked to demonstrate black men can be a beacon of leadership to address issues in economic, education, and health for black men, our families, and our communities. We currently have a partnership with PPS and Harriet Tubman Middle School, providing an ambassador's leadership program and a vision board, career exploration program, and competition to help our youth connect with role models and plan for their future. I am here tonight to urge the PPS board to review their master plan for Benson High School and keep the Alliance Alternative High School, Dart School, and Reconnection Program at Benson. Do not temporarily or otherwise relocate the school. Provide stability and continuity to your students that have great minds, work ethics, but face other challenges that require the continuity of going to school and receiving support at the same location. We note that these programs have a strong representation of many youth of color, approximately sixty percent of the youth, particularly African-American, Native American, and Latinx. Maintaining these programs at Benson, Benson strongly aligns with the principles your staff, leadership, and the community as cited as important. It honors the unique history of Benson as a school with a strong CTE focus in history, hands-on learning, and also positioning Benson Polytechnic as a national model for STEAM and CTE. These are some of the key goals and highlights that you've listed. I'm dismayed to see that a comprehensive education experience, for me, code word for college prep, with CTE offerings is being recommended as a strong direction for the school. CTE is a, is the history and the brand of Benson Polytechnic High School, and is a very important component along the continuum of education. Many youth that are in alternative, alternative learning environments thrive on project-based learning and hands-on experiences. Many of them, and all students, see the real value of education in high school when they can have their skills and esteem built by hands-on activities that they can see leads to, to a future where they can earn income. Maintaining these schools at Benson through, through construction provides a much-needed anchor for these students, since Benson is conveniently located to public transit and many community resources. It is also located to the hub of business and industry in downtown Portland, and it makes it easy for services in the community to wrap around these students to know where the continuity of the location for this program, these programs will be. PPS School Board has a racial equity policy, which staff and school board members use to make, or to use to make decisions. You need to support racial equity and support these students. It is a moment of challenge. It may not be easy, but it's clearly the right thing to do. So I urge you, urge you to continue these programs at Benson. Thank you very much.
And our last two speakers are Joe McFerrin and Rebecca Hannison.
Want to thank everybody who testified. Your, your comments are important, and we consider them when we make decisions. Please feel free to contact our board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you want to follow up with the board or with the, with the board office. Okay. Superintendent Guerrero.
Good evening, directors and everyone, here live and in our listening audience. First of all, I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and had a chance to spend time with family and friends. Took the opportunity for a short flight to see the wife and kids and did some overeating and had a chance to play some lengthy Monopoly games and see a late-night movie. So, so that was all a good time. It is, it is an important moment to reflect on all we're grateful and appreciative for and definitely want to put out there to, to all of our students, our staff, our hard-working educators, and leadership team, thank you for all you do here as we work towards improving outcomes for all of our kids, students. Well, tonight we have a couple of important topics that we're, we're going to be talking about. The first is a continued conversation around a challenge that I think a lot of educational leaders around the country wrestle with, and that's balancing the ensuring of student safety with making sure that we have thoughtful working agreements with our local police departments. And we're going to continue to listen to our students, and we're going to make time for that, to take questions, and our board's continued questions to make sure the agreement that we hopefully settle on with our valued partners at the Portland Police Bureau manages a balance that meets our, all of our needs. We know that the particular role and training that our school resource officers are an important part of that equation and how they engage with our school community, so we hope that the continued conversation allows us to work out an agreement that makes those things explicit. Following our regular board meeting, we do have a work session on, on a couple of other topics, but this relates to the ongoing conversation that we're having about the Benson campus. I want to thank the students who have spoken here tonight and others from the broader campus who continue to speak quite passionately about this topic of, of the future of that campus. It hosts a lot of important schools and programs on that campus. Monday, I had the opportunity, along with a couple of our board members and a lot of staff, to meet with Alliance, staff, parents, and students, for example. I thought it was a very important meeting, it was a very informative meeting. I think it'll be just one of a series. I think it'll be just one of a series of continued listening sessions to really understand, first of all, what are some important ways that Portland Public Schools can best support your success and what kind of a facility can help to ensure that. And while there haven't been any decisions made, I think that's exactly the conversation that'll help us clarify what happens next. The underlying message that I want to make sure and put in bold print here is that every one of our students matters in Portland Public Schools. You all deserve to have a place that allows you to reach your full potential. So, hopefully that is exhibited in the decision that we land on as this conversation continues. Tomorrow's another important day because the Governor is going to be releasing her budget. So, we're going to get our first glimpse at what fiscal position that may place public education, K-12 in particular, here in Oregon. So, we'll be looking intently for indications that our schools are a priority here in Oregon. I know that this is a starting point for broader budget discussions when the legislature convenes, starting in January. And I and my superintendent colleagues will remain actively engaged. And at her invitation, a small group of us are coming together to meet with the Governor to hear more details tomorrow afternoon. So, looking forward to that. I'm going to keep my remarks there, but I do want to end us with a little clip, video clip, that our communications team has put together in the spirit of the holiday season, which will share with us a little something about the food sharing program based at Hayhurst.
Ten years ago, when I arrived at this school, I decided we needed to have a backpack program. And the backpack started out with about 10 families, in which we gathered some community support, put food in backpacks, set it home on Friday. Our program has grown to over 30 backpacks, or 30 bags, and we support our own school community. We support the Odyssey needs and the Ainsworth needs.
All are part of the program. All of the PTAs donate to the cause, which is great, and it doesn't take a lot of time. For most of the people here, it's from 8:00 to 8:30 on Friday. Doing it here has led the students, who are waiting for the bus to go to middle school, help.
Seeing the sixth graders come in and help out has been a really nice addition this year. It's so important for them to also be connected with what's happening in their community. Part of the sixth-grade curriculum at Robert Gray is in getting them involved and doing volunteer hours. And I love that piece of giving back to your community and also seeing what is happening, just being in touch with somebody who is maybe in a different situation than you are.
We have a certain amount of bags set out, and we add like a protein and fruit and vegetable and some fresh produce to each of them.
At our school, some kids get free hot lunch, but at home, you can't really give that to them. So, that's why we do food bags, so that they can get the food they need.
It's so that over the weekend or the long week, they can have enough food to last them.
You know, it's really important for kids to understand what's going on globally, as much as it's really important for kids to understand what's happening within their own school community or their own neighborhood.
We do have children that are having a hard time getting their food needs met. It can really affect any families at any time. It's not just on the outer east side of Portland. It really is. It's in southwest, too.
So, if we can provide food and sustenance so that they don't have to worry about where their next meal is coming from, and they come in fed, they are ready to learn, and that helps them on the road to success.
So, we're also going to do a personal hygiene assessment if we want to take...
This really is a community effort. It's not just one parent that's organizing this. We have so many people within our PTA community, but also within our greater community. It really does take a village to make this happen.
It's really wonderful bringing the whole southwest community together and supporting families that are in need of food.
It makes me feel super proud and like I'm helping someone who needs help. And I also just really enjoy it because I can do it with my friends.
This builds community because we're helping kids who are in need, and it makes them feel supported. And it just makes them feel like they're part of the community.
Thank you for your spirit of giving to our school communities engaged in this program. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Our service employees, sorry. International 503 Union has requested time on our agenda. I'd like to invite Mike Bray to the table for his comments.
Chair Moore and members of the Board. My name is Mike Bray. I'm a public services organizer for SEU Local 503 and PPS Local 140.
My name is Adam Napier. I'm the head custodian at Wilson High School. I was asked to speak this evening just to paint a picture of what I deal with on a daily basis. Start off with, I was hired in 1996, so I have a wealth of experience as a custodian. My current staffing levels at Wilson High School, in order to conduct the custodial services that we need to do, I need a staff of between seven and nine people. The way we're currently staffed right now with, you know, maybe a custodial member is out sick or on vacation is minimal in my crew. I have to send people out to other buildings on a continuous basis for weeks, months at a time, reducing my force to about three people. You know, to impact that as well with the numerous CUBs that we have, I want you to imagine that you have a house of 300,000 square feet with 1,700 teenagers in it, and you have to clean up after them every day with three people. We are losing people continuously because of overworked, medical issues, getting hurt on the job, just being forced to do the task of three people at, you know, in a shift. This year alone in my building, I've had a case of pertussis, two cases of MRSA, and I've had to send people out to another building for foot and mouth. I'm very concerned about the safety of the children. Again, in my 20-plus years, I've never had that in my building. No viruses or diseases that I've had to clean up after. So, and I urge you guys to reevaluate the custodial budget when that time comes. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
So, we really wanted to address you all to make sure that you're fully aware of what is now a staffing crisis in the custodial department. It's not a staffing shortage anymore. It's an absolute crisis. We had prepared a video. Also, it didn't look as slick as that. I definitely understand the policy to not show videos from groups other than the PPS comms department, but you all will get a copy of that, and I hope that you will review it. What the video is, is testimony and interviews from custodians and teaching staff, faculty in the schools, explaining what it looks like when we're in this staffing situation. So, I mean, the custodians at PPS take pride in their jobs, and they really want to provide a clean and safe environment for the students of PPS to learn in. But they're not able to do that right now because of the levels of staffing. So, what I'm going to go through real quickly here are just some numbers. I'm going to throw a lot at you, and I'll leave this with you as well, if you like, a copy of this document. But the current situation. So, in the custodial department, there are currently 28 full-time openings and 14 part-time openings. And this has been the case fluctuating around those numbers for the last couple of years. And that's not anything that's just now happening. We now have multiple schools with one custodian during the day and one during the night, you know, in a middle school. It's a lot of square footage on the average day. There used to be hundreds of applicants to the custodial civil service test, which was conducted once a year. The most recent test had 11 applicants, and that was, I think, the third or fourth test this year. So, there are several tests per year now, and we're getting a handful of applicants to them. Custodians are now covering more square footage than ever. Most of you know already, because we've brought this up before, that the department is already budgeted to staff at a level that meets an industry standard that's described as moderately dingy. I'm not just making that up. There's an industry standard, and the current budget allows for staffing at that level, right? So, when you're staffing at a level that's so low, it's already difficult to cover normal absences. But now you have custodians that are, you know, have a higher workload because they've got people that are sick, injured, calling out, and now we're seeing more and more of this due to stress and workload, right? So, what that results in is that shifts aren't able to be covered, so if someone's out sick, there's nobody there, right? So, then you have either a full-time or a head custodian that's working a 12-, 13-hour day, or they pull someone from a high school or another school. So, it's just cyclical. In 2013, we were still right around recent historic annual averages of absenteeism, sick calls, right, of about 10% of the workforce over the course of the year, right? That's doubled in the last two years. So, we have about 20% of the workforce calling out over the course of a year, and that's a lot. Workers' compensation claims in the department averaged 47 claims for the past three years. I honestly don't know what a kind of a standard number is percentage-wise, but to me, 47 is a lot. If you have 47 workers' comp claims during the year, that's a lot, right? Five is a lot, people getting injured on the job. There were 26,388 hours of overtime work last fiscal year. That's a lot of overtime that people are working. People are overworked. And that's due to CUBs. People work on weekends, but also, you know, these custodians having to cover shifts when there's no one to backfill. What we feel like is causing this, we know there's interest by custodial management to work on streamlining the hiring process, and the union wants to collaborate with the district on that with management and make that work for everybody, right? But of course, we bring this all back to wages. PPS custodian wages have not kept up with the cost of living, and they haven't kept up with neighboring districts. For example, part-time custodian wage has only increased 14%, or about $1.50 in the past 10 years. And you all might not know this, but the part-time custodian wage is lower than a full-time custodian wage, but they do the exact same work. So, nobody wants to take the part-time job because they're getting paid less and they're not getting benefits. A full-time custodian wage, starting wage, has only increased about 15% or about $2 in the past 10 years, and a series of step freezes has resulted in a large part of the unit staying stagnant and being near the bottom step. Custodians at the top step of the wage range, a head custodian D like Wilson High School, like Adam, have only seen about a 10% wage increase in the past 10 years. Neighboring school districts and private sector employers are paying more. We know Beaverton pays part-time the same wage as full-time custodians. That's about 50 cents more than PPS starting full-time wage and almost $3 more than the PPS starting part-time wage, three bucks. The part-time, again, part-timers do the same exact work as full-time custodians. David Douglas' starting wage is 1714 an hour, which is $2 more than a PPS custodian, $4 more than the part-time custodian here. And custodians at other districts are still getting annual step increases, which of course encourages retention. So, and one last bit. Beaverton equivalent of a head custodian D here at PPS tops out at $5 more an hour, and David Douglas at least $3 more an hour than a PPS head. So, painting that picture, the district is, PPS is not competitive. We're losing people. We're not getting people to apply, resulting in a diminished workforce that's overworked, stressed, and not able to do the job that adequately serves the students of PPS. So, last year, we were invited, after settling our contract, to address the Board, and, you know, the feeling was that Superintendent was hoping for a positive message, but honestly, we just didn't have a lot to celebrate because we kind of knew this day was coming. We brought it up in bargaining. We brought it up in negotiations that the part-time wage was going to be a huge problem, that the starting wage was going to be a huge problem. So, what we're running into when we bargain a contract is the budget that is allocated to the custodial department. So, as Adam asked, as Adam suggested, we're here to ask you all to consider that going forward, knowing that we have to get out of this crisis somehow. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, the next item is the memorandum of understanding between Portland Public Schools and the Portland Police Bureau. I want to ask Chief of Staff Stephanie Soden to lead the report. And I just want to say a couple of introductory remarks. This MOU has been developed over a number of months through discussions between staff and members of the Youth Services Division of the Portland Police Bureau. Although student resource officers, SROs, have been in PPS schools for almost 20 years, there has never been a formal memorandum of understanding between PPS and the Police Bureau that established the roles and responsibilities of each and clarified processes and expectations for the relationship. So, this is an important and long overdue agreement that Superintendent Guerrero and Chief Outlaw identified as a high priority at their first meeting last year. The Board had the opportunity to review the document in October at a work session. We appreciate the diligence of the PPS and PPB staff in responding to some questions and concerns that were voiced at that time. Stephanie Soden will walk us through the revisions that have been made since then. And Captain Hager and Lieutenant Quackenbush of the Youth Services Division are also here tonight to describe the work of the SROs and answer questions. Some questions will remain after tonight. We only recently received feedback from students, thanks to the efforts of Student Representative Nick Pasler and his team at the District Student Council. Given the importance that this issue has for the safety and well-being of all of our students and school communities, we're postponing the vote on the MOU in order to allow time for Board members to hear directly from students and to receive more information from the PPB. And I think Ms. Soden will talk about some opportunities that will be coming up. And before we launch into the discussion, I'm going to ask Board members to focus your remarks, to the extent possible, on clarifying what information you will need, particularly from the Police Bureau, in order to make a decision on this MOU in an upcoming meeting. And the more specific you can be, the better. I think there are some questions that I've heard over the last couple of days, and I think that will help us to get through this in the most efficient way possible. So, please.
Thank you, Chair Moore and Stephanie Soden, for the record. So, you are correct. This just formalizes an operating protocol that's been in place for nearly 20 years between the district and the Bureau. It outlines roles and responsibilities of SROs, and it describes the processes for their assignment and evaluation, training requirements, which is many, and methods for resolving issues and concerns. And on October 9th, we did present this MOU in a work session and got some direct feedback from you to negotiate some additional language, all of which has been accepted by the Police Bureau. That includes clarifications that both PPS staff and students are involved in the selection and appointment of SROs in schools. It reinforces the training and use of restorative justice and trauma-informed practices to address student misconduct as an alternative to referring students to the juvenile justice system. It clarifies when and how parents are notified and involved if a student is in a custodial interview. It outlines a process for resolving disagreements between the district and the Bureau. And it directs staff to annually collect and report on disaggregated student data to the Board and Portland City Council. So, as Chair Moore mentioned, we have received some recent feedback from a cross-section of PPS students. And I want to thank Board Student Representative Nick Pasler for his assistance and coordination in this. And we talked today about scheduling some additional opportunities for student feedback, input, and also for questions to get answered. I do think there's a little bit of a misperception about the role of SROs, and this is a great opportunity. And I know the team here shares my interest in educating and having that conversation. So, one idea we're exploring is adding to the currently scheduled Student Leadership Summit on the Saturday, December 1st. I've shared that time just before the meeting with my partners here, and I think we can accommodate that. So, I will be working with Nick and his partners on that. We're also looking at scheduling an... We're also looking at scheduling an after-school meeting sometime next week that would allow other students that are not necessarily at the leadership summit, but open it up to a broader audience, and we would include some engagement and advertisement. What I envision at these, both of these sessions would be to have not only the Portland Police Bureau, but staff from our Office of Student Supports that work directly hand-in-hand on a daily basis with our SROs, staff from our security team, and any senior leadership members who are involved, and then, of course, we want to extend the invitation to board members, so you can hear that directly. Just in the conversations we've had today, several of you were on the phone with the three of us, and I think a lot of, I think a lot of information was cleared up, and I think just having those direct, that open dialogue and direct conversation will go a long way, so we welcome that opportunity. So I will have more from, for you, hopefully tomorrow, on those opportunities. And then I would just like to invite Captain Hager and Lieutenant Quackenbush to answer any questions you may have for the remainder of the presentation.
Before we launch into questions, you provided us with a PowerPoint with a fair amount of information, and what I found most interesting and informative was some of the data on outcomes for students, the, the number of incidents, the number of students who were diverted from the juvenile justice system. Could you provide a little bit of background on that before we launch into questions?
Sure. And for the record, my name is Tasha Hager, I'm the captain of the Youth Services Division, and I've been employed with the Portland Police Bureau for over twenty-four years now. So, the, I'm going to give a little bit broader perspective of diversion in the, in the last twenty-four years of being a police officer in Portland, our role in the community has changed dramatically. When I was hired, I was hired as a law enforcement officer, and over the course of time, the expectation of our roles in the community has changed from being law enforcement to actually providing more support for members of our community who are struggling in a myriad of different ways. So, I think that, coming to the Youth Services Division, I've been here for six months now, this is one of the divisions in the Police Bureau that is really extremely proactive in trying to build community relations. So, the procedural justice is a very, has a very large role actually across the entire bureau, and the restorative justice programs, there's actually two of them that have an impact on PPS students. First is one that PPS actually, as I understand, funds and pays for, and is through the schools, and the second is through Multnomah County. So we have Multnomah County juvenile, she works for Multnomah County, but she's actually assigned to our office, and she is a daily resource for our officers to divert calls to her versus actually sending them to JDH with a criminal referral. Her role is strictly pre, uh, pre-police report. So, the number, which I believe was forty-eight last year, is just our referrals to the county. And we don't track those because in the Portland Police Bureau, if the officer writes the report, it's too late. So, so there's no report written, there's no, there's no, the goal is to keep the youth name out of the justice system, that includes keeping their name off of police reports. So the only way I can, I can actually give you that number is because she told me that number. We have no way of actually tracking the number of referrals that we influence or are a part of that are into the PPS restorative justice program, because again, there's no police reports. And then the other thing I'll mention on that is, a part of that program is about having conversations in, what is, what is it called?
Oh, the restorative dialogues?
The restorative dialogues. And the restorative, uh, part of the county went through some change, so their program actually wasn't up and running for about fifty percent of last school year. So I'm kind of expecting those numbers to rise in, in the, in this next year, just, I, I could be wrong because I have to wait till the numbers actually come out, but that program was only available to us for part of the time. Does that answer your question?
And I'm, uh, Acting Lieutenant Quackenbush. Just to tag on that a little bit, so philosophically, you know, being a school resource officer is a calling. It's not just any police officer, it's a special kind of person that's heavily vetted, peer reviews, supervisory reviews, checks of internal affairs, investigations, all those sorts of things, in, input from students on our interview panels, and it's not just something you walk into, it's become a highly specialized position that we scrutinize very closely. You don't want just anybody walking the halls and interacting with students. So it's something that we take very seriously, and philosophically, we're part of the best practices model, which we are on a sort of continuum of care. You know, since the nineteen eighties, the laws have shifted from this traditional division between juvenile justice and juvenile dependency, and recognize that, you know, victims and, wrongdoing and trauma and all these things are fluid, especially in the lives of a lot of young people. And, like the captain alluded to, what our officers and what the people in our division are very passionate, very serious about, are finding the best possible outcomes for every student that we encounter, and we, we recognize the challenges that we've, that they face, and they have highly specialized training and awareness of resources that your average patrol officer doesn't have the inkling of because they live in a different world, where it's just call-to-call all day long and trying to do the quick fix. So we have the ability to develop relationships and work very collaboratively with the student's success and wellness staff in particular on managing situations and before, you know, putting out all those little fires that can happen before it spirals into something larger that's, we have less options because as a crisis escalates, you know, discretion and the ability to intervene in a creative and intentional way, that, that decreases on the other side. So, in a nutshell, that's our philosophy and our approach to working in the schools.
If you could provide an example, in what situation, like, under a student's circumstance, would an SRO be used and why? Like, why, why would an SRO be needed involving a student's situation at a school?
Well, I can offer many. So, to, to top off, to talk about some of the statistics, you know, last year alone, we had fifty-four hundred, more or less, calls for service, nine-one-one calls, et cetera, citywide, that originated from school locations. So, that's going to elicit a response from a police officer, and I guess the question is, what do we want that to look like? What kind of officer do we want to, to have responding to that situation? And so, the system that we have set up right now is that the SROs are the ones that immediately get paged to respond to those, because again, they have the awareness, they have the relationships, they know staff, they know the resources that the various school districts have, they know facility layouts. So they're, they're able to be more intentional about the response and produce better, better outcomes, so. But, uh, school community is a microcosm of our larger community, right? So it runs the gamut as far as types of problems, everything from vandalism to assaults to, we have weapons showing up in schools, unfortunately. And so it's the, as far as events and type of crime or criminal-related behavior, it's, you know, it's reflective, generally speaking, of the broader Portland community.
Yeah, I think, I think that, uh, when you're looking at the number of calls that the Police Bureau's, that the Police Bureau is responding to, of that fifty-four hundred, our SROs took just over twenty-five hundred. So you can already see that, in, in the reality, I'll sit here and tell you, I'm not staffed to the degree that I need to be to do the job that I think that we need to do. However, I, that's another, a story for another day. Of those twenty-five hundred calls, we had five hundred and sixty-six of those calls were, were crimes, were, were people reporting crimes to the police. And, and that, that's only, uh, Group A crimes, which I won't go into, the Group B crimes are a little bit lower level, like trespassing and discon. And those are count, we count them differently, so we, from a data perspective, I don't want to bore you, but from a data perspective, it's harder to track. So of those five hundred and sixty-six reported crimes, our SROs arrested thirteen people last year, thirteen, which is an extremely low number. The rest of those were dealt with in some other way. And, and so, you know, the, going back to the philosophy of what our SROs are about, is about finding a resolution that works best for the student and the school and the community. And the challenge of putting that back onto our, our regular patrol officers, I mean, at this point, you know, listen to your custodians talk about their, their staffing levels, and I'm like, that sounds very familiar. In the Police Bureau, we have, our staffing levels are very low right now, and our officers are going call-to-call, and through no fault of their own, they are looking for the most expedient way to get to the next call. And, and in my experience of twenty-four years, the most expedient way is to make an arrest or referral and move on. And they, they, they simply don't have the resources that our SROs do. So, uh, and I, you know, I can, I'll just add something here, I really appreciated listening to the students' testimony, and I appreciate having you here, and I actually really am looking forward to PPS providing us a venue to have a conversation because, you know, some of the things, some of the fear that is out there about the police created by what's happening nationally, it's, it's not, it's, that fear is a legitimate thing, and the only way we can address it is by talking about, right here, Portland, Oregon, Portland Public Schools, and how are we different, because we are different. So what is happening here in our school system between the Portland Public Schools and our SROs? And I think that some of those students might be surprised at the difference between what they're, what they're hearing and the national, national numbers and what's actually occurring on the ground in Portland.
Thank you. Addressing that, so as a person of color, obviously, as you say, the national context is not great regarding trust between police and communities of color, and we are a very diverse community. So I'm wondering things like, what kind of training do SROs have in terms of culturally and socialized behaviors? Because sometimes I know that behavior and discipline issues can be really subjective. Another question might be, you know, what is the diversity of the pool of our SROs? Because I, I think it's, would be important, particularly in our really diverse schools, to have, you know, officers that kind of look like our community, and sometimes that helps build better connections and trust, particularly, you know, maybe some that speak a second language, and, and a language of a lot of our students. I just want to be really careful how we, how we think about this, if we're going to have SROs in the school, you know, what impact does it have, particularly on the communities that are, you know, so often kind of criminalized?
So, I'm going to address the second part of your question first, and then I'm going to let Lieutenant Quackenbush talk about the actual training that our, by SROs get. But our, our SROs, or the, the Portland Police Bureau's Youth Services Division, I would argue is probably the most diverse unit in the Police Bureau. And even though we only have twelve right now, eleven SROs, we have, we have a very high level of diversities, different language speakers, different ethnic backgrounds, different color, different sexes, different sexual orientations. So all of that in a small group of twelve people, we're almost all different than each other in one way, shape, or form. I, I, I was asked at one point in time, did we do that on purpose? And, and my answer was no, we just, those are the people that rose to the top, that wanted to come work for the youth in, in the school system, and they're good at what they do, and, and so we took them. I, I, and I don't know why that is, I mean, I haven't sat down and asked each one of them what drove them to do what they're doing, but they all want to be a part of the community. So, so we are a very diverse group of people. And then I'll let Lieutenant Quackenbush talk about the actual training that they get.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, some of that was outlined, I think, in the PowerPoint as well, but just, just to review it, we actually have a supervisor that's away this week because he's a national trainer, and so he's in Texas helping to deliver some of this training to another agency. But through the National Association of School Resource Officers, it's a basic expectation that you, before you step foot in a school, that you complete a basic training. That involves, you know, everything from social media to cyber safety and sex trafficking, FERPA, to trauma-informed care, and working in collaboration with other people that work in a school environment, your counseling staff, your administrators, your teachers, et cetera. Crime prevention through environmental design, I know the district's dealing a lot with safety upgrades and with the new buildings that we're getting ready to break ground on, and that's, that's always a big topic. They move into an advanced class where it touches more on leadership and delivering curriculum, which is, you know, at the will of the school district, obviously, and the, and the teachers, if they feel it's appropriate for a certain class, civics or something like that, to have an officer to come in and talk about law and rights and civil procedure or whatever, that you're capable and competent to be able to work in a classroom environment in that way. Incident command system, so if there's a huge event, being able to manage a catastrophic event, for lack of a better word, that's where we intersect a lot with your emergency management team around planning for earthquakes or whatever act that could happen that we need to do a reunification around. So there's a lot of planning and strategy that we go through with that training. We were actually the premier site for NASRO's delivery of adolescent mental health training that happened last fall, which was a two-day class around understanding the adolescent brain. I think most of us know these days, you know, we all kind of knew that intuitively, that the adolescent brain is, is, is a little bit different, still developing, and also understanding the intersection of that and the challenges that young people might have if they're experiencing mental health issues as well. Some of the symptoms, some of the de-escalation techniques and, and things that you can use if you're dealing with a young person in crisis, protective and risk factors around various forms of disease. You know, we've been through the management courses, supervisors in connection with that. We go to annual conferences for both the national organization, and then Oregon has its own School Resource Officers Association, that, by the way, admin teams and security teams are always welcome to attend and frequently have. I, I know PPS has been there with us in the past. The last conference, for example, was topics around social media safety, an entire presentation one day by a pretty experienced detective, retired detective from the Midwest, around some of the dangers and some of the awarenesses and things that people need to be looking at when they're dealing with social media, and how we can assist with that, critical incident debriefings. There was a very powerful delivery from a sex trafficking survivor that spoke to the group and talked about what that experience was like, and some of the indicators that you need to be aware of, because that's not something that's necessarily obvious, and a lot of people that are in that situation are not even aware of the fact that they're in that situation. So I, I mean, I, I could go on, sort of ad infinitum, but it's, it's an ongoing work in progress. Just a few weeks ago, myself and the Cleveland SRO, Melissa Newhart, had the privilege of going to the National Intervention, or National Behavior Intervention Team Association Conference with PPS, Student Success and Health and Wellness Staff in San Antonio. A lot of great takeaways from that. We did a site visit to a high school in Austin that is solely recovery-based. We did a site visit to a high school in Austin that is solely recovery-based. It's all students in recovery, which I know is, is something that the district is, is working on, and is a dream to build an infrastructure to help, because, you know, unfortunately, there's something like a ninety-some-odd percentage relapse rate for young people in recovery if they're not able to have peer supports and have the right structure and everything. So it's just a lot.
Great, but I guess what I'm not hearing is, my question didn't get answered regarding how you understand the cultural behaviors and understanding our communities, which has, you know, many, many cultural groups, also kids without legal status that might have more fear around. So, I mean, is there specific training to really understand the specific issues of kids of color and the different behaviors that might be typical across various communities?
So I would say that that is more typical of training that all police officers get, not just, I mean, we may find some of those things in specific things in our conferences that maybe our, our SROs would attend, but when it comes to cultural competency, that's something that the Police Bureau trains all police officers on. And so, you know, I think our, our culture, some of the cultural competency in our unit comes from the fact that we are a diverse group of people, so we learn from each other about our own differences. Is probably my experience, well, I will just share my experience, has always been it's, it's easier to learn not in a classroom, but by actually talking to somebody. And that's, and that's what we have. But we have the classroom, the classroom cultural competency through the Bureau for all officers, too.
Implicit bias is a huge topic right now, industry-wide, and I just literally left a class on that yesterday, conversation about that, and, you know, that involves the Harvard's IAT, some of you might be familiar with, and, and raising awareness around your own blind spots, right? So it's, there's definitely a lot of work Bureau-wide that goes into that.
Thank you.
I want to thank Stephanie Soden for the work on the agreement, and also thank Captain Hager and Acting Lieutenant Quackenbush for answering some questions today that I had about the agreement. And I want to just go back to Director Moore's sort of framing at the beginning about the questions we need to have answered in order to be supportive. And I'm going to say, I think there's sort of two buckets of questions that need to be answered, so there's certainly the questions that we as board members need to have answered, but I think it's going to be really important, too, that the questions that our students have get answered. So I want to thank the students, Amelia and others, who contacted us in advance, and our student rep for providing initial student feedback. But I think it's going to be really important that we understand what questions students have, and that we have some mechanism that those answers can be shared broadly. I know just the brief time we had this morning, it was very illuminating. I think it's useful to the community of what school resource officers are and aren't. And I think if we have, if we authentically listen to students and answer some of their questions, I think that it will set the relationship off on a much stronger footing, if there's a clear understanding. So I want to make sure, whatever process we set up, that we have an opportunity to understand what our students' questions are and get them answered. For me, I had some, one of my primary questions is around sort of consistency in approach. So if the approach of the School Resource Officers is to make sure that, to sort of divert students out of the criminal justice system, but to focus on alternatives, restorative justice and other things, is how do we have, do we not have sort of situational differences across the district, so that a student at Grant, or Wilson, or Jefferson, or Madison is treated differently? So I'd like to understand how we have this consistency in approach, so no matter where you are, that students will get similar treatment for similar infractions or behaviors.
So I'll start with saying, I think that it comes back to philosophy, because it's not necessarily about written rules. Officers have a degree of discretion in their job, and, and I think I said this morning when we were talking, there's some degree of people being human that's going to make interactions different. But that said, the philosophy we set and how those SROs are supervised basically creates the environment where they, they are looking for opportunities to help students out. And so that's going to look different for each one. So even if you had two very similar circumstances, you might have two different outcomes, because one officer is going to look at what that student needs and look at it and determine that the need is different than another student. So they might do two different things, but both of those outcomes would be a deferral from the criminal justice system. So, and we want them to, we want them to see through an equity lens, not necessarily an equality lens. We want them to see the world as not, as having options and, and using those options in a way that's going to be beneficial to the students. So I know that's not really, what you're looking for is really a consistent behavior. And really, the only thing I can tell you is the, we set clear expectations, I set clear expectations of the people that are in the unit, and it's the supervisor's responsibility to ensure that our SROs are meeting those expectations. And when they don't, then the, then, then those supervisors have conversations. Our SROs are reviewed by their supervisors annually, once a year, their performance is, is reviewed. So if there are things that we're seeing, those things are addressed. And, and if there was someone in our unit who is not, does not live up to or believe in the philosophy of our unit, they don't stay there. So I don't, I know that's not really...
So, because discretion can cut both ways. It can be a good thing and a bad thing.
Right, yes, it can.
And I'm wondering, possibly, that there's built into the agreement sort of an annual review of data, that that be something that we look at, and, again, discretion can be a good thing, and, but it also can lead to inequities in the system. So I know that we have, it's built in here, an evaluation, and also looking at disaggregated data, and I hope that disaggregation would be across a number of different things, including schools, so that we can look for, look for trends, and just make sure that we, we don't have a system that treats students, that discretion is not a bad thing for students.
Yes, and I think one of the things, and I was, one of the things that's important to understand about this IGA is, you know, a lot of people put a lot of work into this to get it in front of you, and I want to, in this public forum, actually, none of, most of them aren't probably here, but acknowledge that a lot of people did a lot of work on this. But the product doesn't have to be final just because the chief and the superintendent sign it, in fact, it's not. The, the IGA acts are built in, you know, every quarter to be reviewed during its first year, and then annually after that, because we fully expect that we will not have hit every single point that we wanted to, or that something we put in didn't work out the way we anticipated it to work out, and then we may need to make changes. So I think it's important to understand that as a document, that it's open for additions. And, and I do know that we've, we have agreed to, to do an annual review on, on our data, and I don't know if you want to...
So we will make sure that the section that talks about annual, so it's collection and reporting of disaggregated data, student data. We've asked for sort of number of arrests, types of incidences, and resolution, or how, how each incident was resolved. And we will make sure it's by school or across schools, so you can see trends in schools. I can add that language.
I also wanted to comment on the, the review process, the quarterly review process. So I'm prepared, when we do need to vote on this, to bring forward an amendment that codifies some kind of student engagement, direct student engagement in that quarterly review process, whether it's our board representative or a designee. And then, just to your point about the, the human factor and training, really make sure that that review process includes a lot of qualitative information that's coming forward from all of our students, that gets to Julia's point as well, about how is the climate different in our different high schools based on how the individual SROs envision their roles and, and play out their roles? So I think that a lot of the meat here is in the implementation of the MOU, and, again, those quarterly check-ins and, and making sure that the student's experience is really coming forward. And another thing I wanted to note is just the irony a bit in the fact that we will have more coverage under this MOU, and that there's a little bit of fear around that in, in the sense that it can or has been characterized as a greater police presence. But the irony is that what we have now is a little bit more episodic, and those officers are not able to work on creating relationships, and they're not known by the students very deeply, because the coverage is shallow. And so even though the, the presence will be greater, it'll be much more, the hope is that it'll be much more embedded in the culture of the school, and that students will really have more relationship with those officers. So I think that's the, the intent.
That is a key feature of this MOU, which most larger school systems and departments have in place to, to codify exactly the kinds of topics that we're discussing here, but a feature is ensuring that there's five-day-a-week coverage. You heard about fifty, four-hundred occasions, that's an average of a couple dozen serious instances a day when school staff are, are requesting the assistance on a variety. So when those alerts go out, I know I heard our, our student representative say earlier, you know, how often is that really announced? I just watched it. I, I watched the live camera feed from my office, and I see how, you know, the benefit of having the SRO diffuse those instances, which often happen at our front doors and in our lobbies, that I would not want a student, a teacher, a principal, to have to run interception for. So I'm thankful for that practical relation, working relationship we have right now, where every day I see how much it, I literally see how much that matters, so thank you. And just to clarify, the, the, the number of SROs, that guarantees one per cluster? That's an average of about twenty schools per School Resource Officer. So just to put it in perspective, and that is going to be a challenge to make sure they get to know the unique school communities of all of that cluster.
I'd like to add, on a good note, so I was recently at an event in a western school district not far from here, that's very diverse, and they were honoring different, it was an honor staff and all, and a School Resource Officer was honored, and there were a lot of students there and staff supporting that, and it was because of the relationship that was built. So I think that, you know, we know that that's what it's going to boil down to, it's the relationship that they build, but it, it was really positive, and I was happy to see that that community really embraced that, and the students felt kind of value added there.
So I would add, you know, we, we did lose an SRO earlier this year, when school started, and the outpouring of support from the Wilson community was overwhelming, and so I think that demonstrates also that that person had built up a really strong relationship and was very trusted. So we see it at PPS, too.
Just one question, so we went, you, and thank you for all of your work on this MOU as well, but you went over multiple, some of the trainings and multiple of trainings that SROs, SROs, oh my gosh, SROs do go through. And one thing that I didn't hear, just, I mean, as it poses a question, was that is there any time when potential SROs are meeting with students, getting to know students, getting to know, like, how a school climate works? I mean, I heard, you know, trainings about crime prevention and mental health, and, but are potential SROs making it into schools before they're signed on? Like, are they meeting with students? So that's one thing I'd like to know.
Yes, we have a pool of candidates right now, I think about six on deck. So is that, is that what you're speaking to? Like, six potential SROs coming into the program? Like, how do they get to know the school community? Am I understanding that right?
Well, kind of, but I'm just, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, like, in, in part of the training process, are there times, or like, are there times or are there trainings that involve SROs going to schools, potential SROs going to schools, meeting with students, getting to know students? Because if they haven't been in a student environment before coming into this position, how are they going to know how to deal with students? And work, well, I shouldn't say deal with students, but work with students, because that's, because that's an entirely different animal than, I shouldn't say animal either, but that's an entirely different situation than the public.
Yeah. That's a core competency, I think, in the job. Every, every SRO that we have has something that I say, you, you have to bring a piece of your humanity to the table, there's like a thing. So for me, like, I'm a musician, I play music, I do a lot of music events, I'll play piano in the cafeteria or whatever. We have a professional skateboarder that will, you know, go hit the half-pipe at Madison or whatever from time to time. We've got a football coach at Jefferson, that sort of thing. So there's, there's sort of an expectation that you're bringing your humanity to the job, and that you're embedded in the community in that way, too, which I think is partially what you're getting at, but maybe not entirely. Was there more you were looking for there?
Well, I mean, I, I, I hope I'm, I'm trying to say this in the right way, but like, again, like, are there opportunities where potential SROs, who are going to have this position, to be in schools, meeting with students at, like, are they, I mean, are like, SROs meeting with students face-to-face to talk to them about their potential position in these schools?
So I, I think part of wanting to come to YSD, we, if we have opportunities that we put out for officers who are not part of our unit to engage youth, you know, we do numerous summer camps over the, over the summer. Typically, those aren't high school age, those are younger, middle-school-age kids. And I think what Lieutenant Quackenbush was saying is that we have, we are looking to bring people on who are already engaged with youth in the community in their own way, because, and many of them have been and are. And those that aren't involved in their own communities with youth have found ways to become involved with youth through the Portland Police Bureau, whether, whether it's working with our cadet program, which many of our youth in the program come from Portland Public Schools, or working in some of the, the events that we do. But it's not tied to training. So there's no, we don't train, we don't bring them in, train them, and take them into the school, and then say, this is how we want, how to interact with, with youth. It's something that we expect them to have built up, a skill to, that's the skill they need to bring to our unit before they can be SROs. So they, they need to have built that up. Does that, is that making sense?
But this is part of the qualitative analysis and evaluation part, once we're into the business. Is it working? What's, what are the relationships like? Are students reporting that they feel like they can relate to this presence in their school? That's exactly the kind of anecdotal, experiential information that we're going to need to see come forward. Not as an evaluation of the individual, but the relationship, the systems, all of that.
So we talked earlier about, one way to do it might be to add on to the climate survey and have, get some feedback that way, add several questions related to the program. So we will explore those ways as well.
So kind of building off some of the things that Nick was talking about, because I heard a couple of things, and I'll, I'll own them, so, but as part of, I guess, strategy and structures for building that trust in the community. And I don't expect answers, but I'm saying, these are things that when you do meet with students, be kind of explaining that, what's a day in the life look like? Because I don't know. And with examples of, and I encountered this situation, and here's how I dealt with it, I think would be really useful, I mean, I'd love to, to, to be in the room to hear that, and I, and I think that would be helpful for students as well, and kind of the, and here's how I'm different from, you know, what you're reading the news, what you see on TV, because... Because as you explain, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a different role. I think all those pieces would be useful to communicate with students going forward. And I know, so the part of the data is around arrests, which are a handful. I think another piece to communicate is, you know, there are times when you have to, if there's, there's no discretion around it, you have to go in and make an arrest. And when there is some discretion, communicating those situations as well would be, I think, useful for, for all of us and for, for students.
Agreed, that's outlined in the MOU.
Yeah.
And I can add to that just a little bit, if you're interested. Of those thirteen arrests, arguably three were discretionary. The bulk of those, I mean, several of those were, or like a warrant, an order from a judge to take someone into custody. Officer doesn't have discretion there. Or a victim-driven situation where someone absolutely demands that a report be filed and charges be pressed. That was the bulk of those situations. So just to that point.
PPS is Appendix A, which is the cost of the agreement. It's not attached to what we got, so that'd be good to get, if we could have that.
Okay, thank you. Are you saying it's missing from the packet?
Pardon?
Are you saying it's missing from the packet?
There's no Appendix A, it's referenced.
It's referenced. That's an oversight, my apologies, we will get it to you.
It's the cost structure of the agreement. I didn't have it in mind.
Thank you for pointing that out, I'll be sure you get that.
So then I just want to flag something for PPS, because I think one of the most visible police presence in PPS is if you go to a basketball game or a football game. And there's a lot of uniformed police, there's a lot of, often sometimes lots of police cars and police with guns. And I think often that is the representation that the community sees of the presence of the school resource officers. Like, as I said, the conversation we had was a much fuller discussion about the full duties. But I think a lot of the community members, parents, what they see is they go to a football game and there's like, wow, there's a lot of police here with guns and police cars. And I think people can take that different ways. I might take it as, well, this makes me feel safer, like that there's a large crowd, that anything happens, there's police here. I know that's not a universal feeling. And I would encourage, and it sounds like that's discretionary on PPS's part, because it's actually not part of this agreement, although it's referenced in, on page four, that we can pay an extra stipend for off-duty police officers. I would really encourage us to look at whether there's a different way to provide, maybe a supplemental way. So maybe there's a base, but do we, could it be a, you know, fewer numbers of officers and maybe more campus monitors? I know a lot of security for larger events, they, they don't have security, most of them are not uniformed or they're not in a traditional uniform, or they certainly aren't carrying guns. And it just creates a different sort of atmosphere. So I think that would be something I would ask the district to look at, just longer term, that sort of change up that mix. It's probably also not as costly. And it sounds like also there's issues with just short staffing of getting people to fill those roles. So that would be something that just is additive for the district to look at. And then I just want to note one thing and also ask you to describe something that you described earlier in our conversation. But when the board had a conversation earlier about the MOU, there was language around when students could, when there could be custodial interviews with students. And the concern, at least I had and others as well, that those interviews, which could be a very serious, lead to very serious consequences for students, were happening, that it wasn't required, parent consent wasn't required in there. And we've made some adjustment now that the language now does reference parent consent. And there's an exception. And I thought, I found the exception, so I'm concerned about that as a parent, that there'd be an interview with perhaps, you know, my student without any sort of parent consent or knowledge or be able to advise your child. There's an exception and I thought it was useful explanation about what that exception is and why it exists. And so I'm wondering if you can sort of share that, because I think it's useful for the broader community to know.
So as, I think a good anecdotal example of what I would consider to be the exception, an imminent danger. So without going into too much detail, without naming the people involved, et cetera, et cetera. You know, report of a firearm in a, in a school building. And the, the safety of the school community at large sort of outweighs legally, you know, the imminency, the due process of the person to neutralize the potential threat. So in that situation, students quickly called down to the office, backpack confiscated, is there something in here? Yes, you know, retrieval of it. Turns out BB gun, okay? So things, things worked out a little bit differently in that sort of situation. But that would be, that's the most recent sort of best example that I can think of offhand, where there would be an imminency, where the impetus is, we have to get the threat, at the threat quickly and then move to the position of due process after that, if there's an investigation.
And conversely, say you had something that was, something very serious, like a Measure eleven assault. But the student was in custody and the interview, because it's not an immediate threat, that the student's parents could be contacted so that they could advise their student.
Yes, there's no legal exigency in a situation such as you described. So due process would then trump any sort of imminency claim.
Would it be, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. And parents are often not available on a moment's notice for a lot of different reasons. I might feel more comfortable if we kind of stipulated that some trusted adult, some adult that the student trusted would be present at the interview. You know, a teacher, a counselor, the principal, somebody. So that it wasn't just, you know, a kid talking to a cop or two.
I, I know in practice that's been done. And it's frequently the recommendation of experienced investigators who know the law pretty, pretty extensively. They'll recommend if there's a serious, relatively serious offense happening or potential for a charge like that, that the interview should be recorded, there should be an adult in the room, exactly as you described, a counseling staff member or something to support the student in that situation. And in practice, I know that's been done, although, as you say, it's not necessarily reflected in the agreement at this point.
Is that something that we could add?
So we can, we can look at that. The only thing, you know, there are some, from a legal perspective versus what the school will agree, will agree to. There will be times when it will be appropriate to interview somebody with some immediacy and/or not having somebody else in the room. And I think, and I would have to find it in agreement, but I think that we put in there, like, if the student doesn't want somebody there, then, and yet we've been required by the MOU to have, to put someone in the room, yet we have a student saying, I don't want someone in the room. So, I mean, we can look at the language around that, but there are, there are lots of different situations that, that could come up, that we need to, that we would have to look at. And that would be one, sometimes a student isn't going to want their, isn't going to want someone else in the room when we're talking to them. So we can, we can look at it to see if we can massage it. But I'm not sure we can get all the anticipated what-ifs into, into that. Because I think we did a lot of work on that particular part from the, from the last input we got from the board.
And it's, it's, again, it's such a small number. If we're getting to the point where we're looking at arrests and, you know, someone's a suspect or going to be in a custodial interview situation, they're going to be most likely, in particularly an assault case, they're going to be coordinated with investigators and going above and beyond expectations and not sort of looking at, what's the minimum standard? We need to, if we're building a criminal case, because that's the direction we have to go with this, then they're, they're, they're preparing themselves for court and sitting in front of a trial fact and being able to articulate that there was a knowledgeable waiver of rights or information was provided reasonably, et cetera, et cetera. So it's absolutely something we can look at.
Okay.
Thinking of the recording piece of it, whether that should be part of the agreement?
It's actually state law, I think, passed last year.
Measure eleven?
And if it takes, and if it takes place in a police facility, I think is the state law, and involves a juvenile, someone under the age of eighteen.
Okay.
Well, if it's, if the interview is happening at a, say, a high school and it's not a police facility, per se, so.
It's, no, the, I think, I think initially with the legislation, there was a movement in that direction. And they kind of, you know, going, the law ended up where it's at. But there was, there were definitely concerns around what everyone's expressing here. And there was, there was some interest in getting, getting it across the board, I think, in every situation. And that's where the law landed.
Maybe, maybe that should be part of our agreement. I mean, you're, you're saying it's best practice and...
For, for any sort of serious crime, Measure eleven in particular, which I don't think we had any of those last year, none of these arrests reflect those. So, but if, if it were to happen, that would be, yeah, best practice.
I just wanted to comment real quick. So other board members have, or other board directors have brought up, like, the, kind of the relationship and connection between SROs and students. And I guess I'm, I'm aware of that we, you know, some clusters only have one, is it one or two SROs per?
One.
One, one, one SRO per cluster, okay. Coming from experience, I mean, I can sit here today and say I have no idea who my SRO is. And with my student council today, I had students from Franklin. I mean, yes, but if we all want to, if we're trying to create better relationships, everybody would want to know. I mean, of course, right, yeah. But most, like, I can, I mean, first from the students I met today from several different high schools, none of us have any idea who our SRO is. And with that one SRO per cluster, I know that's, that's a stretch for SRO to be working in different schools. But I would like to, I mean, hopefully I'd like to see better ways and better ideas of how SROs can connect more with students and the overall student body. Sadly, I know in my school, I think, I've, I think I've seen a police car, and I assume it's our SRO at our school maybe once a month or once every two months. And that's partly why I have no idea who it is. But just walking through the halls when, or walking outside when we go to lunch and the police car's outside, most students kind of get on high alert, because everyone's like, oh, why are they here? Like, and sad to say, but who, most students are wondering, who did they get today? With the situ, you know, a situation involving students. So I would like to see, maybe through this agreement, how we can move forward to get more students to know and be aware of their SROs.
It's an excellent topic to discuss in our forums with students, to get ideas. Because I know, I know you do outreach events and, but there's always new ideas coming, so it'd be great to hear.
I had a couple of information requests. So for the, and this may not need to be in the MOU, but I think in particular, if we pass this multi-year agreement, I think particularly in year one, during the quarterly reviews, I think we, we need to build in mechanisms for student feedback.
Amy, mention that.
Yeah, we're going to work on an amendment. It can either be in the MOU itself, or it can be in our resolution adopting it, that it's a PPS's commitment that student will bring forward greater student voice on that quarterly process. So we'll have more on that next time.
Okay, down the road, I'd like to get more specificity around how we're disaggregating. You know, what are the categories that we're using to disaggregate? And I think special education should be one of the categories. And I, I would very much like to see some, some indication of, I mentioned this on the phone this morning. Like, what's the proportion of calls that are coming from incidents inside a school? Like student-to-student interaction versus a parent? You know, DV situation or something?
Or like admin, too, like a call from admin.
Right, but what's the admin calling about?
About, exactly, okay.
So is it, is it something that's happening inside the school? Is it something that's happening in the vicinity of the school? Because I know we get a bunch of those, too. And, and, you know, some way to kind of categorize or characterize the nature of the, the nature of the call. Because, you know, I have, I have ideas in my head about when SROs are called. And I'm guessing, I'm wrong. But it would be good to know, you know, what is it, what is it that the SROs are responding to? Because I think that if, if I'm right that I'm wrong, and that a lot of these calls are in response to things that are happening outside school, or not student-related behavior, that could go a long way toward alleviating some fears. But anyway, so if, if it's possible to get that prior to a vote, I think that would be very helpful.
So the way the police bureau does data, probably what you're asking for would not be able to happen unless they assigned an analyst to read every single call of the, I mean, we just take the twenty-five hundred that our SROs went to, those calls. The only way to know, the only information we have is what the call was, where it was, and what the disposition of the call was. That's what our analysts can see. To see anymore, they have to actually dig into the call. And then they'll be limited by what information was included in the call. So you could say your caller, your complainant was calling about this, about whatever. But unless the analyst knows that the person's name they're reading is a school administrator, they wouldn't know whether that person was just a citizen on the street or an administrator calling in. So I think it's something we can discuss with PPS to see if there's any way we can get to some data tracking around what, what you're looking for. But, and on the small thing, you know, on the smaller numbers, like when we're looking at the arrests, we could talk, I mean, we could, that's, it's thirteen. We, those are the ones where we have reports, we know exactly what happened. But when we get into, a lot of the other calls may not even have generated a report. And when they did that report, we would have to pull each report and read it. So it would take a lot of manpower to get down to the detail, I think, that you're looking for. But I will ask our strategic services to give me as much detail in the reports as they can.
Okay.
I feel compelled to add on that. There's, we, we know that there's a significant under-reporting issue and that I just know from experience and any SRO will tell you, when they walk in a building, they frequently get pulled eighteen different directions all of a sudden. So you'll have an administrator walking, I have this bag of property I need to get rid of, full of contraband or whatever. And then there's a trespass notice for someone that needs to be delivered. And then this student is having a crisis, can you help me talk to them? Then someone else, by the way, I need to file a report. And so frequently... and so, frequently, it'll just come up as one call, and then you know, and I've, I've seen it, I see it happen all day long, you know, that, that actually, there were like ten different things that happened there, so, some of that data, in different agencies, I've seen do different ways, some places, they'll do like a tally sheet or like a reporting sheet to help track some of that data, that would be something that we would have to implement here, but as, as it stands right now, just that sort of generic pulling from the computer system, and then, plus with our philosophical approach to, like, try not to document and try to keep people out of the system, because that's the first step, is putting a name in the system, right?
Right.
So, that's, it's a tricky sort of dance there to get that right.
Okay. Sort of highlights the need to get some qualitative info, yeah.
If I may, Board Chair, I would love the opportunity to sort of run down on an email to you all what I think I heard your requested changes are, and get your feedback. I, I just want to be sensitive to the other team that's
Right, right.
Waiting for the work session, unless there are other questions you need information on.
I have one. It's the PPS data. Can we get some info about how many referrals to the PPS mediation or RJ program?
I will ask that, yes. My sense is we can, but I know who to ask.
Okay.
I have a series of questions, but they're not lucky for you, they're more for PPS, but thank you for answering all our questions today.
It's awesome to meet you.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more clarification, because we keep talking about disaggregated data, and, and I think I heard you say is, most of the, most of your work is diverting, problem-solving, and not taking names, and so, is the only disaggregated data we have are the thirteen kids who got arrested? Where you have names and...
So, we have other, we have other data, so we can tell you, we can look at a number of schools, or a number of calls per school. We had, I had our Strategic Services divide our calls into what happens during the school day versus what happens outside of school hours, so Monday through Friday, seven to five. It may not always account for a in-service day or something along those lines, so there's, you know, in data, there's always caveats, there's always something that's going to be, that you're not accounting for, but we do have some, some significant breakdowns that we can share, what the call, what kinds of calls, not necessarily the, the results, we can tell you the results of every call, but thirteen weren't an arrest, you know what I'm saying, but, and so, we can tell you, you know, in our, our group A crimes are, you know, assaults, sex crime, I mean, there are some serious things that fall into that category, so...
So, I think also some of the things we want to track certainly are race and disability status, so, that kind of data is also going to be helpful to us.
Well, see, that's what I'm hearing, for the bulk of their work, we're not going to get, because...
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how, that's, that's what's going to...
Right. Outside of the thirteen arrests, we may not have that, it may not be entered into, if the, if the person was diverted, then we may not have that, because we didn't write a police report, it didn't go into our system, so Strategic Services is not going to be able to give me that, and, you know, I can look into, like, the referral, to our referrals to the restorative justice program, if they can break down data for me, it's an ask from the county, that's their data, so I have to ask them for that, which I'm willing to do, so...
I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, and I will say one challenge on disabilities, unless it's an obvious thing, I don't believe that's a question we ask, so, so, that may, that may be a, a challenge, too, because we may have somebody who actually has a disability that we're just unaware of, so...
Okay, so, did you want to say something? Okay, so, let's close this portion out, and we're going to, I, I didn't hear any other data requests, you're going to send an email, and we're going to be conducting some listening sessions, and we will return to this in a couple of weeks broadly. So, thank you for being here, thank you for
Thank you.
Taking a barrage of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done on this.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Okay, so, next on the agenda is the business agenda. Okay, go ahead. Well, let me ask one question, Ms. Houston, is there any, are there any changes to the business agenda?
Well, you have your revised business agenda before you, it's been posted online. We removed, the reason it's revised, we withdrew Resolution 5766, which was Head Start, we added one more field trip to Resolution 5767, and we put a new date on 5768.
Okay, and you had a...
And then, one adjustment that in the minutes from the November thirteenth meeting, that, in the discussion about the Franklin High School mascot naming process, the minutes need to actually reflect that it was two Franklin parents on the committee versus the one that's listed here, so, do I need to formally amend that word?
I don't think you need to formally, just note the correction. Okay. Do I have a motion in a second to adopt?
Some votes, yes.
Director Konstant moves, Director Sparza Brown seconds. Is there any public comment?
There's not.
Is there any board discussion? Okay, the Board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Student representative?
Yes. Okay, the business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. With student representative voting yes. Okay, do we have any other, any committee or conference reports?
I just have a brief committee report from the Policy and Governance Committee. I want to note for the Board that we're in the midst of a public comment, or wrapping up a public comment period for two district policies, the district auditors, the professional, we're not wrapping this other one up, we still have it out for a public comment, the professional conduct between staff and students, we also have sixteen revisions, so if there's anything in any of those eighteen policies that you have an issue with, now is the time to let us know, because they'll be coming for a second reading, so just let everybody know, and then in addition, this Thursday, at a eight-thirty meet, we have an eight-thirty meeting with the committee, there'll be four new policies that will be coming to the Board, and we'll share those with everybody, so you can look at them before the first reading.
I just have a brief report, we had a convening of the chalkboard project, which I sit on the advisory board for, a couple of things that were of interest, one was a report out from their Educator Advancement Council, and really, a very inspiring panel of teachers in training in the Woodburn School District in partnership with Chomeketa Community College, and just a really fine example of cultivating a pipeline of diverse talent for a teacher pool and, and growing your own in your own community, and we did have a couple of the superintendent's senior leadership team there, and so, it was just gratifying to see this is being done very well places in our state, and this is a need that we talk about a lot in our own district, so, hopefully, we're in communication with our partners in other school districts about what, what do we need to do more to ensure that, that we're growing a, a diverse pipeline of educators. And then the other piece that was interesting was an exercise around design thinking, so, looking at, you know, systems get the results that they're designed for, so if we're looking at high school graduation, how do we look at our system design from the perspective of users, the students, and how might we do things differently if that was the primary driver? And that also had a really amazing student panel from Tillamook School District, and how they're sort of reorienting a lot of aspects of primarily their high school program, including schedule and all that, based on a very facilitated design process that is led by the students, so, hopefully, we're going to get a little bit of this in our visioning process and the student component of that, but, again, just really good to connect with other people, leaders around the state about best practices, so...
Okay. Go ahead.
...our meeting last night. So, next week, school members from the different districts in the county, I said, I think seven districts will be meeting with legislators, December tenth. Last night, Chair Moore and I, we had a pre-meeting with other district board members, two of whom were also legislators, so, it was a great discussion, hearing, although, we're the only district so far that has an official policies or legislative agenda approved, so, a lot of their comments were kind of unofficial sense of the Board, but it was interesting to hear the diversity of issues, but, two things that stood out, one, QEM, 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 everybody is very supportive of full funding for the quality education model, and secondly, not at the cost of other state programs. Every other district called out the need for more affordable housing, more ancillary mental health services, all, all the wraparound services for student support also need more funds, there was just broad agreement on that, and then there was noting that different districts also face different challenges, Park Rose passes bonds, Centennial doesn't, and they're in two very different situations, and, and I think there was recognition where Oregon in the early nineties moved to the equalization model in terms of per-student funding is the same around the state, with, you know, little bells and whistles added to it, and that's not true around capital funding and building, buildings, and different districts have vastly different property tax bases, and we're very fortunate here. So, it was great discussion, and we look forward to a good discussion on the tenth with some of our local legislators.
Just real quick, tonight's actually my final call-out for our December, or our Saturday Student Summit, that the DSC has been planning for, oh, I don't know, like, probably five months now, so it's exciting to see that that event's finally going to take place in a few days. I'd like to thank all of the students that have helped us plan this event, staff at Cleveland High School, as well as all the work staff have done at the district office to help us move forward with this event and make it happen in a smooth, and, should I say, lack, for lack of a better word, awesome manner. We're looking forward to a morning of breakout sessions where students from around the district can meet with each other to talk about certain issues, and with an afternoon of talking with PPS's revisioning group to look forward into the future of PPS, which is, I think, is going to be really important, and I think students who are planning on attending the summit are really excited for that as well, because they're, they're going to have a part in PPS's future, so, which we want to include the most that we can, so we're super excited about that, as well as in the next coming week or week and a half or so of getting more input on the SRO agreement and understanding, which I think is super important, so, thank you.
Any other reports? Any other business? Okay.
Can I ask, when might we have our Board Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee up and running since tomorrow with the Governor's Budget out of the chute? It'll be important for us to engage as a body, is it, do we have a, a date?
We don't have a date yet, we do have a committee, it's going to be Director Bailey, Director Konstant, and myself, and I'm working with Courtney to, to find the best time to meet, and we're going to be, and we're going to be setting up both a regular schedule during the session, and then with the understanding that we may need to meet or, or at least confer, sort of on an ad hoc basis as things arise, so it'll be imminent.
Great, thank you.
Following this board meeting, we're going to be convening a work session, which will take place here. We will also have a work session on December fourth, and the next regular meeting of the Board will be held on December eleventh, and this meeting is adjourned.